Pion, TGP Talino at galing ng Pinoy. Honorable Sebong J. Tevez Jr., Tingog, Tignog, Yedamari K. Romualdes. Trabaho, tagapagtaguyot ng mga reforma sa adhikaing babalikat at hahango sa mga oportunidad para sa mga Pilipino. Honorable Johan Munich P. Bautista, G. Bautista. TUCP Trade Union Congress Party Honorable Raymond Democrat C. Mendoza. United Senior Citizens Coalition ng Pilipinas Incorporated Honorable Milagros Aquino Magcaysay. Uswag Ilonggo Party Honorable James Jojo Ang Jr.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the roll call shows that 290 members responded to the call.
Responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Recognizes the Honorable Lawrence R. Defensor of the 3rd District of Iloilo as the Acting Plor Leader. Before Speaker of the House Majority in the House, and they shall elect among themselves the Majority Leader, the Acting Plor Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to all Representatives.
There is a motion to open the table for nominations for leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable David J. J. C. Suarez from the 2nd District of Quezon to make his nomination.
The Honorable David J. J. C. Suarez from the 2nd District of Quezon is recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, distinguished colleagues of the 20th Congress, ladies and gentlemen. As we gather today to formally open the 20th Congress of the Republic, we do so at a critical moment of our nation's story. One filled with promise but also marked by uncertainty. It is in moments like these that leadership matters most. It is in that spirit that I rise today to nominate a man whose leadership has been tested, proven, and deeply felt across this chamber and beyond. The Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. In the 19th Congress, Speaker Romualdes feared this institution with both resolve and wisdom. Under his stewardship, the House of the Representatives became a true House of the people. Responsive to the needs of the nation, attuned to the voice of the common Filipino, and anchored in the values of unity, service, and progress. He brought not just experience but character. Character marked by quiet strength, strategic foresight, and unwavering commitment to public service. With clarity of vision and steadiness of hand, he championed landmark reforms, strengthened legislative-executive cooperation, and ensured that every voice, regardless of affiliation or region, found space in the national conversation. Colleagues, I have seen firsthand how Speaker Romualdes works. Not for the spotlight, but for results. His leadership transcends titles. It is grounded in listening, guided by principle, and driven by an enduring faith in the Filipino people. In the face of adversity, he remains calm. Under pressure, he stays grounded. Amid political divisions, he builds bridges. And in times of doubt, he leads with the heart. The 19th Congress, under his watch, he delivered one of the most productive and purposeful legislative terms in recent memory. We passed priority measures that advance the goals of Bagong Pilipinas, empowered communities, and created pathways for inclusive and sustainable growth. But more than numbers of laws, he gave us direction. And he gave the public something more important than power: trust. That trust was not given lightly. It was earned, earned through hard work, transparency, and a kind of leadership that listens more than it speaks, delivers more than it promises, and unites more than it divides. As we open a new chapter in the 20th Congress, we face fresh challenges: global volatility, domestic headwind, and the ever-present call to bring our people out of poverty and into opportunity. But we also have a foundation to build on: a legacy of inclusive leadership, collaborative governance, and a house that truly works. That legacy has a name, and today, it is my distinct honor to nominate him as Speaker of the House of Representatives: Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Is not only a public servant of experience and stature, he is a leader of empathy, integrity, and conviction; a unifier, a reformer, a partner of the President, and a champion of the people. Let us entrust the speakership to a man who has already shown us what dignified, decisive, and compassionate leadership looks like. Let us reaffirm our commitment to good governance by placing the gavel once more in capable and steady hands. I respectfully nominate the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 20th Congress.
Acting Plor Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos from the 1st District of Ilocos Norte to second the nomination.
The Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos is recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, distinguished colleagues. On behalf of the Partido Federal ng Pilipinas, I rise today with profound pride and resolute conviction to formally second the nomination of the esteemed gentleman from the 1st District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for the position of Speaker of House of Representatives in the 20th Congress.
Acting Plor Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Wilfredo Marc M. Enverga from the 1st District of Quezon to second the nomination.
The Honorable Wilfredo Marc M. Enverga is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officer, honorable colleagues, esteemed members of this chamber. On behalf of the Nationalist People's Coalition, I am deeply honored and proud to second the nomination of Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Acting Plor Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Ronaldo V. Puno from the 1st District of Antipolo to second the nomination.
The Honorable Ronaldo V. Puno is recognized.
Honorable Presiding Officer, my dearest colleagues, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the National Unity Party, with profound gratitude for his dedicated service during the 19th Congress, and with hopes for an even greater nation under his continued leadership of the 20th Congress, I have the honor to second the nomination of the Honorable Representative from the 1st District of Leyte, Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Acting Plor Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Yevgeny Vicente B. Imano from the 2nd District of Misamis Oriental to second the nomination.
The Honorable Yevgeny Vicente Imano is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Colleagues, friends, members of the House, in behalf of our Speaker, Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Acting Plor Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Raymond Democrat C. Mendoza from the TUCP Partilis to second the nomination.
The Honorable Raymond Democratic C. Mendoza is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of PCFI, the Partilis Coalition Foundation Inc., led by our President, Representative Zaldeco, with confidence and with admiration, I second the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Acting Plor Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, there being no other nominations for the position of Speaker, I move to close the table of nominations.
Mr. Presi... the Honorable... There is a motion to close the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is carried. Acting Plor Leader.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to proceed with the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There is a motion to proceed to the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is approved. The election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives is now in order. The Deputy Secretary of the Legislative Operations Department will now call the roll of members. May we request members, upon being called, to state the name of the candidate. They are voting for a Speaker of the House of Representatives without any need for explanation.
Roll call of members for the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives. Honorable Representatives, Abalos.
Abante. I fully support Speaker Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 20th Congress. May I explain, Presiding Officer, my vote?
Mr. Presiding Officer, with the kind indulgence of the Honorable Abante, let's proceed with the voting without explanation.
Asidre.
Thank you, Kong Abante.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Tingog Partilis votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Acosta.
For the 3rd District of Palawan, we vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Adyong.
The 1st District of the Province of Lano del Sur votes Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for the speakership.
Advincula.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 3rd Legislative District of Cavite, I vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Agarao.
Ang bota ko po ay para kay Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Agyao.
From the Lone District of Kalinga, I boboto ko po si Speaker Romualdes.
Alano.
Villay Rahman Rahim. From the Lone District of Basilan, I cast my vote in favor of Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Alba.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the 1st District of Bukinnon, I cast my vote in favor of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Albano.
The Presiding Officer, this humble representation of the 1st District of the Province of Isabela votes for a man for all season, a good leader, and a good friend to all and a visionary, and one of the best public servants that I've ever seen and honored to meet. I vote for the representative of the 1st District of the Province of Leyte, Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes.
Almario Chino Miguel.
From the 2nd District of the Province of Dava Oriental, this representation humbly votes for the, for our, for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Almario Dennis.
From Paquatic City, 2nd District, I voted for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as our House Speaker. Thank you very much.
Almonte.
For the 1st District of Misamis Occidental, Speaker Martin Romualdes for the speakership.
Alvarez Jose.
We vote for, thank you.
Alvarez Mercedes.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I vote for Representative Romualdes.
Amante.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the 3rd District of Laguna, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes. He is the best man for the job. Congratulations, boss.
Amatong. Ang.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Uswag Ilonggo Partilis votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Angara.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. This representation from the Lone District of Aurora votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Angelis.
From the 2nd District of Terlak, we fully support and vote for Martin Romualdes.
Aquino.
For the Lone District of Putuan City, we vote for, I vote for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Aquino Magcaysay.
For United Senior Citizens Partilis, I support Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Arbizon Munir.
Mr. Presiding Officer, my vote is for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Arenas.
From the 3rd District of the Province of Pangasinan, I vote for the Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes.
Arrogancia.
From the 3rd District of Quezon Province, I vote yes for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Asistyo.
As Representative of 3rd District Kalokan City, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Atide.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 1st District of Quezon City, my vote is for Ferdinand, Honorable Ferdinand G. Romualdes.
Augmentado.
Maayu Butag, I vote for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes. Thank you.
Ayon.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. In behalf of Suri Partilis or Soloparent, I choose to abstain.
Islands, I vote to abstain.
Balindong.
Salamang alaykum warakmatullahi wa barakatuh. From the 2nd District of Lano del Sur, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Banias Nograles.
From Lone District of General Santo City, I am casting my vote in favor of our lone nominee for speakership, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Bangkoro.
Maayu Butag, for the 1st District of Sambonggasi Bugay, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Barba.
Representative Martin Romualdes.
Barbers.
On behalf of the people of Surigao del Norte, District 2, I vote, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Baronda.
Maayu Agas at Tontanan, I, Julian L. Jamjam Baronda, of the Lone District of Iloilo City, vote for Ferdinand Marco, Martin G. Romualdes. Madamong asalama.
Barsaga.
From the 4th District of Cavite, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Basco.
Thank you and good morning. This representation from the 1st District of Agusan del Sur, I vote Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Bautista Claudio. Bautista Johan Munich.
On behalf of Trabaho Party List, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Bautista Lim.
Presiding Officer, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Benitez Alfredo. Abstain. Beltran.
Mayapayabak po, from the Bakbo Bukin Party List, I vote for Ferdinand Romualdes for speakership. Thank you.
Benitez Javier Miguel.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the Third District of Negros Occidental, this representation votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Bernos Ching.
Embagna Bigateo Aminapo, on behalf of Solid North Party List, I cast my vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Bernos Joseph Santuninho.
From the Lone District of Abra, my vote is for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Biron.
Maayong Aga, the Fourth District of the Province of Iloilo, votes for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Bucobo.
From the Second District of Tagig, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Bolilia.
Mister Presiding Officer, this representation from the Fourth District, Province of Batangas, votes for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Bondok. Briones.
Mister Presiding Officer, abstain.
Bulut Bigtang.
For the Lone District of Apayao, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Kagas.
Maayong Buntag ka na Tontanan. In behalf of the Province of Davao del Sur, I cast my vote in favor of Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Calderon.
From the Seventh District, Province of Cebu, I cast my vote in favor of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Calixto.
From Lone District of Pasay, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Kawagdan.
Romualdes.
Kari.
For the Fifth District of Leyte, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Castro.
In behalf of the Second District of Capis, I vote for the Honorable Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker for the 20th Congress.
Kaiton.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the Lone District and for the people of Martin, Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for the Speaker of the 20th Congress. Maraming salamat po.
Celeste.
From the First District of Pangasinan, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Sendanya.
Mapagpalayang umaga mula sa Akbayan Party List at ang atibong bota ay abstain.
Siniza.
From Second District of Davao de Oro, I vote Speaker Martin as Speaker for 20th Congress.
Chan.
From the, from the Lone District of Lapulapu City, I cast my vote on Speaker Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Chua.
On behalf of the Third District of the City of Manila, this humble representation fully supports Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Chuatay.
Mister Presiding Officer, my vote is for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Chungalao.
From the Lone District of Ifugao, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ko Elizaldi. Ko Rene Luis.
For Kabataan Party List, I vote abstain.
Kowanko Jaime Eduardo Mark.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the First District, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Kowanko Mark.
Martin Romualdes, speak, for Speaker.
Coliantes.
The people of the Third District of Batangas through this representation, vote Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Copilar.
Good morning, Mister Presiding Officer. From the Sixth District of Quezon City, I strongly support and cast my vote to Representative Speaker Martin Romualdes to be the House of Representative of the 20th Congress.
Corvera.
From the Lone District of Pagusan del Norte, I vote for Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Cruz Agatha Paula.
For the Fifth District of Bulakan, Mister Presiding Officer, I cast my vote in favor of Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Cruz Ricardo.
Ang kinatawan po ng unang distrito ng Tagig at Bayan ng Pateros ay para kay Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Cruzado.
Mister Chair, ah, from the First District of Cotabato Province, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Kuwa.
I vote for, um, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Dagooc.
Morning everyone. Ah, the Association of Philippine Electric Operatives, a party list, chose to abstain from voting.
Dalok.
Mister Presiding Officer, our vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Dayang Hirang.
My vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Daza.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the First District of Northern Samar, I choose to abstain. Thank you.
De Jesus.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Pireca Party List, ang bota po namin ay, ang bota ko po ay abstain.
De Lima.
Good morning. This representation as representative of the Mamamayang Liberal or ML Party List, respectfully obtains from the voting.
De Venesia.
The Fourth District of Pangasinan, two districts presentation, Congresswoman Gina de Venesia, cast its vote for latest First District Representative Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 20th Congress.
Defensor. Romualdes. Degamo.
Maayong Buntag sa Tantan, para sa mas progresibo o mas malinaon na tercero distrito, I am casting my vote to the good Speaker, Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Delmore.
Reflecting on the will of my constituents, the First District of the City of Cebu will abstain.
Di Makuwa.
On behalf of the Fifth District of Batangas, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Di Magila.
Mister Presiding Officer, representing the Lone District of the City of Binyan, I am casting my vote in favor of Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Di Maporo Imelda.
From the Province of Lano del Norte, First District, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as House Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Di Maporo City Amina.
For the Second District of Lano del Norte, I vote for Martin Romualdes as a Speaker.
Di Okno.
For the Akbayan Party List, I abstain.
Dionisio.
In behalf of the First District of the City of Manila, it's an honor and a privilege to vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes as House Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Domingo.
On behalf of the First District of Bulakan, I vote for the Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Domogan.
Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Duterte Harold James. Duterte Omar Vincent. Duterte Paulo. Di Faustino.
Sa ngalan ng ikaanim na distrito ng lalawigan ng Isabela, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Di Faustino Michael Carlos.
Para sa ikalimang distrito po ng lalawigan ng Isabela, sinusuportahan at binoboto po namin si Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Di Ian Paul.
From the Third District of Isabela, we vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Imano.
Padayon Pilipino and, um, the Second District of Misamis Oriental votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Enverga.
The First District of Quezon Province reiterates its support and vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Erise.
From the Second District of Kalaokan and the Liberal Party, I chose to abstain. Thank you.
Escudero.
From the First District of Sorcegon, I'm voting for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Espares.
From Coopna Coop Party List, this representation votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Espina.
From the Lone District of Biliran, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ferrer Antonio.
For the Sixth District of Cavite, I vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Ferrer Jeffrey.
From the Fourth District of Negros Occidental, my vote goes to my good friend Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Flores.
Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Fortes.
Good morning. The Second District of the Province of Sorcegon votes in favor of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes for the speakership of the 20th Congress. Thank you very much.
Frasco.
Maayong Buntag, Mister Presiding Officer. From the Fifth District of Cebu, I respectfully abstain.
Fresnedi.
Ah, from the Lone District of the City of Montilupa, ah, my vote goes to Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Funtibelia.
From the Fourth District of Camarini Sur, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Galang.
From the Second District of Venezuela, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
From the 2nd District of Venezuela, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Galeos?
I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Garbin?
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Akubiko Partilis, we vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes.
Garcia Albert?
Mister Presiding Officer, the 2nd District of Bataan votes for Speaker Martin G. Romaldes.
Garcia Dante?
From the 2nd District of La Union, my vote goes to Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Garcia Jose Arturo?
For the 3rd District of Rizal, we vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Garcia Karen Hope?
I vote for the Honorable Martin Romaldes.
Garcia Maria Angela?
Mister Presiding Officer, as the representative of the 3rd District of Bataan, I cast my vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes.
Gardiola?
My vote is for Ferdinand Romaldes.
Garin? Gachalian?
For the 1st District of Valencia City, we vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House.
Gato?
From the Lone District of Batanes, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as Speaker of the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Glepa?
One Coop Partilist votes for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House in the 20th Congress.
Yes sir.
Go?
2nd District of Isabela votes for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Gomez?
Mayong buntag, ang katauhan sa ikaupat na distrito sa Leyte, ibutar o bisuporta, k Martin Romaldes is Speaker of the House.
Gonzalez Alexandria?
For the Lone District of the City of Mandaluyo, I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Gonzalez Alisa Micaela?
On behalf of the 3rd District of Pampanga, I vote for Honorable Representative Speaker Martin Romaldes as our Speaker for the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Gonzalez Christopher Sheen?
Good morning Mister Presiding Officer. For the Lone District of Eastern Samar, I abstain.
Gonzalez Roy?
For the Lone District of the City of Satarosa, we vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Goriseta?
Good morning. From the 2nd District, Province of Iloilo, my vote is for Speaker Martin Romaldes. Thank you.
Guiko?
As a representative of the 5th District of Pangasinan, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Ginto?
Representing the 1st District of Capis, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Gulyas?
Mister Presiding Officer, I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes. Thank you.
Gutierrez?
Romaldes.
Hernandez Charice An?
Thank you Mister Presiding Officer. This representation votes in favor of Representative Romaldes to be the Speaker of the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Hernandez Dennis?
From Port District of Prisal, I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Hernandez Ferdinand?
2nd District, South Cotabato, I vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Hernandez Ramil?
From the 2nd District of Laguna, I vote Speaker Martin Romaldes. Thank you.
Hofer Asim?
From the 2nd District of Zamwangga Cibugay, I cast my vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Oribata?
From the 1st District of Camaria Sur, I vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as the Speaker of the House. Salamat po.
Ismula?
Assalamualaikum. Murahmatullahi ta'ala wal barakatu. Akbayan Partilist Representative votes to abstain. Thank you.
Iway?
From the 1st District of Negros Oriental, my vote goes to Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Javier?
Maupay nga aga ha'ton nga tanan, the 2nd District of Leyte votes Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as Speaker of the House for the 20th Congress.
Ko Antonio?
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the 1st District of Masbate, I cast my vote in favor of Representative Martin Romaldes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 20th Congress.
Ko Elisa?
From the 2nd District of Masbate, I cast my vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Ko Wilton?
On behalf of the 3rd District of Masbate, I cast my vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Kong Hun?
Mula sa Lalawigan ng Sambales, yes Speaker Martin Romaldes!
Ko?
Mister Presiding Officer, this representation in behalf of Abangrecod Partilis, I vote as Speaker of the House to Representative of this 20th Congress, the gentleman from Leyte, Congressman Martin Romaldes.
Labad Labad?
Good morning Mister Presiding Officer. On behalf of the 2nd District of Zamwangga del Norte, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 20th Congress. Tichres Partilis, I vote yes for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Lagbas?
From the 1st District of Misamis Oriental, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes.
Lagdomeyo Jose Manuel?
Mister Presiding Officer, from the 2nd District of Davao del Norte, we vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes.
Lagdomeyo Monique Yasmin Maria?
Mister Presiding Officer, from the 1st District of the City of Makati, we vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Lagman?
On behalf of the 1st Congressional District of Albay, I choose to abstain.
Lagon Daphne?
I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Lagon Sunny?
On behalf of Akubisaya Partilis, I vote for the Honorable Martin G. Romaldes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 20th Congress. Thank you.
Lara?
Ballo, Presiding Officer. As a representative of the 3rd District of Kagayan, I vote for Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as the Speaker of the 20th Congress. Obalo?
Lazatin?
Maya Paga Panapun, from 1st District of Pampanga, and we're voting for Martin Romaldes for the Speaker of the 20th Congress.
Ledesma?
Presidente Officer, your honors, Negros Occidental's 1st District, I would like to validate and certify that the holographic manifestation that I issued on May 20, 2025 in favor of Ferdinand Martin Romaldes is my vote. Thank you.
Legación?
Good morning. As representative of the 3rd Legislative District of Cabarinisur, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives in this 20th Congress.
Legarda?
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Lone District of Antique, we vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Officer, for the 1st District of Batangas, this representation votes for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes.
Libanan?
Sir Presiding Officer, bilang kinatawan po ng 4-Piece Partilist, ang boto ko po ay abstain.
Lopez?
Magandang tanghalip po sa ating lahat. Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Allono Partilis, I cast my vote for Speaker Martin G. Romaldes. Thank you po.
Gloria?
Of the 2nd District of Albay, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romaldes for Speaker in the 20th Congress.
From the 5th District of Cabite, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Lumayak?
I vote for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Padernos?
Bilang kinatawan ay kalawandis dito ng Bulacan, buo ang suporta po natin para po kay Speaker Martin Romaldes.